Okay, let's do this. I'd like to use this to signify of the United States of America, through the public, which is hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're going to roll call. Daniel White, President.
Teresa Walsh.
Here.
Dustin Reese, here. Megan Dexter.
Here.
Roger Love, here. Okay, we will start with some approval of minutes from October 14th budget adopted meeting, October 14th public hearing, valley vacay, October 14th regular meeting, October 29th special meeting, December 18th, November 6th public hearing zoning change, and November 6th special meeting, and November 12th public hearing Oak Grove Confidences Plan. Seven such events.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Dustin Reese makes a motion to approve all the minutes from the October, November meeting.
Second.
Megan Dexter, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor. Okay, when we move on to the supportive officers and employees, we'll start with the Police Department.
Mr. Governor. That's easy today. Uh, $2,069 left on the K9 fund, just need to approve a $1,000 check to go to Alex.
To what?
$1,000 check to go to Alex to help pay off Kurt.
How much is it?
Uh, American Morgan Dog. I think it's American.
$2,069 in there right behind you, it was $1,000.
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Teresa Walsh will make the motion to approve. Second, Dustin Reese, second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
On the Police Department, we have four applications.
You got four applications?
Yes.
I think we already set up a meeting to do interviews next, this week, next week, this week?
Well, work for everybody, you guys, the holiday week coming up.
I'm free anytime this week, after 4:30.
I'm available Thursday evening and Friday.
I can be available anytime. Daniel's available as well, too, there.
I would like to be involved. I don't think I can make a decision without being involved, so I would like to be there.
What report for you, maybe?
After 5:00, honestly. 5:00 or after.
Okay. One day?
Um...
Thursday or Friday?
Tuesday. Thursday or Friday.
Uh, this week?
If they can make it work, if not, Monday, Tuesday.
Teresa can make it Thursday or Friday, I can do it anytime.
So, today's Tuesday, happy you have $48 on us. So, you're not available, but Friday is gonna be here.
Or this Friday?
This Friday? Friday at 5:00? Started?
Sure.
Can we see the applicants now?
Yeah, we can pass it down.
On another note, for the Police Department, are you guys not going to order any new tasers this year, or two this year, or two next year?
That was, that was a story project, so I can take a look at the numbers from the bridge and see what we got, but from my understanding, two tasers this year was over what we had spent. I want to say it was like five and some change to buy two this year. So, the last time I talked to them, we had talked about maybe doing one this year, or in the battery pack, and programming, and all that kind of stuff, which would knock the price down, but without achieving that kind of stuff, I'm, I'm what I'm able to do here.
Sure. Uh, let's move on to the Fire Department.
So, I have one quote, and then Roger has the other quote, right? For gunners from the fire station. Um, this one's through Superior Door, which is Justin and Brandon, and it's for 3150, that's 280 foot, six inch, and then all the downspouts, 70 for the downspout, and then removing and putting out for 3150.
In the end, it was 31,95, so.
Yeah, so whichever one you guys want to pick.
I'm good with the Superior Doors.
My 3150. I make a motion for 3150.
Dustin makes a motion for 3150 to get the gun placed in the fire station for Superior Door.
Second.
Teresa Walsh, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
But all I have. Plug.
Superior. Um, I'll have to get it to you tomorrow.
Should I get mine?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh.
I'm good.
Okay. No, I can make it. Oh, because they, they.
Okay. 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 Moving right along, uh...
How about the Water Department? David?
Well, I don't have anything, uh, as far as information about the well yet. Uh, I just talked to Nick last week about it, and Fearless, they're still trying to get going with the geological study, and that's just the first of many steps to get a well, hopefully we can go with a pitless well, and just have a natural area, who said this a lot, but we'll see what the geological study comes up with. Yesterday, I had an emergency with one of the well lines, came into the plant a little early, and saw that in the yard in front of the garage, a well line had ruptured. So, I had to call Coolies, get an emergency, come in, back it up, fix it, of course. But other than that, that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you.
Little writing, wastewater Bruce.
So, I've got two quotes, there is a line running through Jim Hendrix Field, the back during the sewer project the town gave, right, he gave right away to the town to put a gravel path going from the end of Center Street by Max's House, down, down his, uh, field to the intersect that also runs along the river. Uh, at some point, somebody got off that road, and it smooshed the lateral that ran down that hill, and it's been bubbling sewage out of it. So, I've got two quotes, I tried to get three quotes to get it fixed, one of the companies I called, said they'll come out for it, give me a quote, never came, never heard nothing back on. We've got Delaware Construction for $3,650, and I'm not sure if they're, I tried to get in as soon as I could, to get in a package, to look like they are. And then I've got Trudy's Lawn Maintenance for $3,575. We've used Delaware Construction before for the add set line, so I probably prefer them, but, and they're cheaper a little bit, too.
Why, I've just read this, because I personally seen it when I showed up here today, um, but when I read it, it said that a five and a half foot line, six inches in diameter, approximately 10 foot long, why are we not fixing that ourselves?
Because it's about six foot down, usually, maybe a little over five, so we have, we have, our trench box can't be lifted by the backup.
To replace a six inch long?
Yeah, six inches.
We have to get it that wide, we gotta break it up and pave it?
That deep, yeah. It's about six foot deep.
I'll make the motion to approve Delaware Construction at $3,650.
I got a motion from Teresa to go with Delaware Construction, $3,650 for the repair.
Second.
Dustin Reese, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved.
All right, that's all I have. Max Gossman, sir. Thank you, anyway.
Probably some of you guys are aware, and some of you may not, um, there were some unfortunate circumstances at, uh, Ox Paper Plant, which required them to do a discharge to us. Um, we have some things in place that need to be probably brought up to speed, there's some old references. Um, the procedure for which that they are required to notify us of discharge, um, gives us ample time, because we are, um, in the National Pretreatment, um, system, through our MPDS permit, we're required to do, um, monitoring. Um, so, anytime that there's a, um, need for significant industrial users to, um, discharge to the public treatment works down there, they're required to notify the superintendent. So, there was some different people, new people, there was a call that was made to the town, um, on Friday afternoon, I'm guessing probably around 3:30, um, that they were gonna need to discharge, but they didn't state when they were gonna start discharging and how much.
They did, and there was an amount given, uh, it was, I don't remember right off the top of my head, but I'm pretty sure I called Bruce as soon as I got that call.
You had my question, when they called, they didn't say they were going to.
They had already, right.
So, they didn't have to call ahead of time.
So, they, they did after the fact?
Yeah. He called me saying that they had started discharging, and they would be discharging for seven to 14 days.
Okay. So, um, part of that plan and that monitoring is to find out what their daily intake was, and to get some data on strengths of loading, okay? So, that was, uh, notified late Friday afternoon. Um, the weekend duty was performed, um, throughout the weekend, on Monday morning, our treatment plant was in bad shape. We got orange water come in, and all our secondary and final discharges, um, which is something that IDEM refers to as pass-through. Now, part of this pretreatment program that we're on, to allow significant users to discharge into the public work system, there's gotta be some things, um, into the non-delegated pretreatment program requirements, a couple of definitions that I'll cover real quick, is interference, which means a discharge alone or in conjunction with the discharge, a discharge from other sources inhibits or disrupts the treatment processes and operations of the treatment plant. And the other one, the definition that I'd like to explain to you guys, is pass-through. Pass-through means a discharge from someone through a public works in the waters of the state of Indiana, in quantities or concentrations, that alone are in conjunction with any other discharge, cause a violation of the required MPDS permit, including increase in magnitude and duration of flow. So, with that being said, our requirements for this is to, um, effectively get in a, a plan for, um, people to discharge, part of that plan is the notification and stuff. Um, this is really lengthy, there's probably over 100 pages included in this, but, um, any user of the public work system, including any significant industrial user, that is subject to national category of standards, or state local, or any national pretreatment standard or requirement, shall not allow them the introduction into the following plan. Number one is a pollution from any source of non-domestic wastewater that could pass through or cause interference with operation or performance of the treatment plant. And number five, and these are just the two that are directly related to the situation, the pollutant including oxygen man pollutant is biochemical oxygen man, released and discharged at a flow rate of pollutant concentration that could cause interference with the treatment plant. So, with this being said, what, what is required, we have blown all FLOP limitations, which says that their direct discharge into us caused interference and pass-through, which required us to violate our MPDS permit. The pretreatment standards on set, there's things that we can do that weren't done in the past, because we were operating off of Sewer Use Ordinance 93.5. Um, since the 93.5, it looks like there was an update to an ordinance that we adopted, it was 2026-8, which I have here, and part of our Sewer Use Ordinance reads pretty much like the MPDS permit, um, which talks about how we can handle that, okay? So, in order, or once we updated this, we got into a Sewer Use and industrial pretreatment enforcement response plan. So, what we had to do in a nutshell is we had to stop their discharge. They are not happy. Uh, there's probably gonna be some calls that are urging you guys as town council members to put pressure on the wastewater plant to start accepting their discharge. According to our enforcement response plan, I did everything completely by the book and by the law. So, I want you guys to be aware of what's going on, so that at the time comes to where you guys are starting to get pressure to do something that's potentially unethical or against the law, I wanted to make sure you guys knew what was going on prior to anything else. So, the first thing that happens is it's our job to stop that interference at all costs, and even to cease and desist a discharge event, which is where we're at right now. So, the plan for the treatment plan is, um, I met with IDEM for over six hours today, we are stopping their discharge until the point that we become back into compliance. It's the superintendent's enforcement based on our Sewer Use Ordinance 2026-8, and our Sewer Use Industrial Pretreatment Enforcement Response Plan, that allows us to stop that discharge from them. Their situation was an emergency situation, which we all understand, but an emerg, nonplanning on their part doesn't constitute emergency on ours, especially when it causes us to violate the MPDS permit. The plan going forward is to serve them with a non-compliance letter, that's the first step in this. If something like this continues to happen in the past, there's several other steps that we can do, um, to protect the treatment plant. Now, during the visit with IDEM today, because of the, um, pass-through that's still occurring at the treatment plant, there will be a violation, um, letter that's sent to us, not because something that we did wrong, which I'll explain in the inspection letter, it's more to lay the baselines for potentially what could happen with them the next time that this happens. So, um, I've been in contact with their plant manager, their certified operator, their, um, environmental specialist, all urging me to allow them to discharge, we just can't. Um, I got pictures, I got test results. Um, we've been running tests all day, on non-testing days. Um, Bruce and I were there late in the evening, I think I finished off the phone with you, Roger, as well, after 8 o'clock, I've been there since 10 a.m. this morning, doing additional testing on non-testing days, part of which is discussed in this plan. Um, for the additional testing and stuff to try to get us back in compliance, there is a fee scheduled that can be charged in the future if we have to. Um, right now, they're not happy, because I want, I am ordering them to not discharge until the point that we are back in compliance. Once they are in compliance, I will only allow them to discharge during hours of operations so we can monitor the effects of the treatment plant from their discharge.
So, just to make sure the rest of the board's kind of just, they have their own switch, they can start feeding our plant right now, they don't have to get, they don't have to get approval from us, so we can flip a switch or anything else, they've got a direct line to our plant.
Yes.
They can start, and that's what happened, they called to notify areas of the town, they had already started putting stuff through our plant, before they even called, um, and because of the high concentrations of everything that they had, they, they technically took our plant and took it totally out of sync. So, if we would've had some kind of warning where we could slowly start taking some of their, uh, waste and do reports and analyze it, know what we were dealing with, and how much we could actually, our plant could actually handle at the time, we'd have had a different situation, but since they called on a Friday, and they were running overnight, I mean, through the whole weekend, it was discharge into us, uh, 67,000 gallons, I think.
Eight, he said eighty, I thought it was 80,000 gallons a minute, or something to that effect.
So, is that, is that more in practice for a business to have just a switch like that?
That was the agreement that was put in with you guys at some point in the past. Um, they used to do, um, direct, what was that thing called? It's been years ago, it was called a direct discharge permit. And what it allowed Rock 10 to do back in the day, they could store their water, the processed water, in a containment vessel, which allowed them to do very little analytical testing. And as long as it was past disinfection season, they didn't need a permit or anything to discharge to the river under certain standards. Well, at some point, the EPA and the IDEM decided that they no longer issued those, so they required any industrial user that couldn't, um, meet MPDS standards, which we have to meet, that they were to go through a pretreatment process, and then discharge either into the river using an MPDS permit, or acquire a Indiana pretreatment permit, which they have done. The only thing, because when that permit was written, it was based off of that 93.5 Sewer Unit Ordinance, which basically, the only talked about was flow. So, all their other parameters of testing are on a report status, so as long as they don't discharge, they're not required to test. They do some testing anyways, but it's not representative, because it's not leaving the plant, so they're not required to report it on the, on their, um, reports. Only when they discharge, they are supposed to report their strengths, which that is, was written by the Indiana Pretreatment Program based off of Ordinance 93.5. So, when we get through this mess, we probably need to review and put some limitations on, um, concentration and loading of the flow, because even though they maintained it 38 gallons per minute, which is 57,400 gallons a day, um, which their permit says that they can have a maximum weekly average of 57,000, okay? But they have a daily maximum of 220,000 gallons. So, we need to get some changes put in place in our ordinance that put, define, uh, not just flow, but add concentration of strengths of, um, different elements that could affect our treatment process. Now, unfortunately, we are designed as a domestic wastewater treatment plant, which we do really good at treating domestic waste. What we don't have, and I doubt anybody in Indiana has, a efficient method of treating paper pulp. Now, their water is recycled, and recycled, and recycled, and the concentration of solids every time they go through their process just increases. They don't have wasting capabilities to waste the paper pulp. The only time any paper pulp is removed is the bottom of their clarifier, which goes into a process. Everything else is discharged into Lagoon 1, it goes into Lagoon 2, into 3, then they draw that water back into their East Pond for their, they call it clean water, as far from clean. Our limits on suspended solids going out of our treatment plant are 30 milligrams per liter. What they have leaving their treatment plant is 275 milligrams per liter. Their BODs, we are required maximal concentration of 30 milligrams per liter, they are at 1,100 milligrams per liter. Potentially, they could wipe our whole plant out. We're fortunate enough to catch it at time, but it's gonna take some time to get back in compliance. Um, I got pictures, documentation, items from there, they were in violation of the National Pretreatment Permit, which leads us to our actions of suspending their use. And if we come to, just past the introduction on this, if you guys were to look at this on Section 4, Personal Responsibilities, wastewater superintendent or his or her designated representative has a responsibility to initiate additional enforcement actions, and first being a notice of violation, that's kind of where that starts. Um, so, we'll give them in written notice, a notice of violation. Um, the other things are that we can refer to the State or EPA for criminal action, administrative fines, um, compliance orders, hearings, cease and desist orders, and emergency suspension is where we're at right now. So, we started with emergency suspension, because had we taken any more of that flow, we could potentially, uh, cease all, um, treatment from our facility. Now, right now, the only violation that we're in is solids. We were only able to remove about 60% of the solids that were sent to us, which put us down to, uh, 61 milligrams per liter, which is about double of what we can do legally. which is about double of what we can do legally. IDEM's been notified, all the steps were carefully put into place based on our MPDS permit. We did everything by the book. There is nothing, there is not a loophole. I've been through every one of these pages, including termination of discharge because of the violations of pass-through and interference. So we can take industrial flow as long as it doesn't disrupt our treatment process of domestic waste, which it has. So Commonwealth still takes care of part of our enforcement response plans. They do the surveys for us. They've been okay since when I started that they were doing this. So Brady's gonna type up a letter based on our information and data that we've been sending to them and give them this order. Part of that response, once we are back in compliance, we will allow them to discharge, but only the hours of operation work, like I said, so we can monitor the effects because we're not designed for it in the beginning. And that gets you a real teeter in that line of what you can do for money and what you shouldn't do. So we can't violate, we can't take a chance and knock on the plant and erase the two years of stuff that we've done in the last few years to get the treatment plant to where it is. One thing is the solid removal. Right now, we average about 99.9% removal of any solids, which is fantastic on anybody's standards. We're down to 60. We're hoping that in a couple of days, we continue to pass us through the plant and get back in compliance, which then will allow them to do. We're toying around for eight hours, which is going to be about 5,000 gallons a day. We'll have to increase our frequency of testing to look for trends. If we see the trend going lower, which will be an improvement, then we can adjust the amount of flow they can send to us. But until that point, they are not to discharge until we are back in compliance. So I kind of wanted to give you guys an update on this. These, we have a permit because I probably thought that maybe you guys didn't have direct access. And I also have these digital copies I can send you guys and you guys can read them.
Should be on the website.
Should be on the website. So, international. Suspend all discharges from OX Industries until we're back in compliance. I think for the first step, that we will go ahead because there's, IDEM's not pleased either. And in order for them to send a recommendation for violation to an industrial user, typically that goes in hand with recommendation of enforcement to the public works. But because we went by the book, they're not going to be able to send us any enforcement for the pass-through. It's unfortunate that we're not able to meet our highest standards of quality effort that we typically send to river. And I'm not super pleased at how the whole situation went, but here we are. So now we're going to have to deal with it. But because we're going to send a notice of noncompliance for the National Pretreatment based on our enforcement response plan, that kind of tells IDEM that we've done everything that we can do and now we're just dealing with the ramifications. That'll allow them to go ahead and start with the violation of enforcement for OX Industries. The enforcement that they have is not necessarily how this went. It's not really ethical. They didn't follow the rules. They kind of played by their own, which they were in an emergency situation. So I kind of understand, but they didn't do the proper steps and channels to do this. We're well above our rights to cancel their discharging rights. We are well within our rights to send them a notice of violation, which is the first step. That basically sets the ground borders for any future disruptions of the plant caused by their discharge. So the reason that they had to discharge at us, I found out today, was because they didn't pay attention, they over flooded their lagoons into the river. So their violation process started then. Like I said, I've been in contact with the plant manager. He's not happy. He's threatened that they were going to have to shut the mill down until they were able to get to us because the water keeps getting higher. I understand that and I hope you guys understand that. But noncomplaining on their part doesn't constitute an emergency on ours. We cannot continue to stay in violation of the MPDS permit because they let their lagoons go for two years too long without discharging to us because they didn't want to. So that's the ground that we're standing on until we're back in compliance.
So I have a question, just because I know that we metered that discharge. They control turning it up. What, did somebody read that meter to make sure that we know where they're at now? So that we know that they're not discharging?
No, we're, we have access to that facility based on the National Pretreatment. We're allowed to go in there, monitor, inspect, treat their wastewater. Bruce and Eric went out there, collected samples because we weren't able to get ahold of any onsite staff there. And I sent Bruce back out there today after we told them to shut the blow-off. And we just visually looked, there's nothing coming in. There's that valve that gets discharged at the edge of the lagoon that hooks into the pipe that runs directly into our interceptor. So we know they're shut off. There is some evidence that at some point, that flow potentially could have been turned up to a double that level. We show flow charts at our treatment plant and we average about 110,000 a day during dry weather, which over the weekend was dry weather. At 4:00 AM, we went from 110 gallons per minute to 325 gallons a minute for over three hours. It's an unexplained huge amount of flow increase at 4:00 AM on Sunday morning. If everybody in the town flushed their toilet at the same time, we still wouldn't see that flow. So.
Do we need to remove that switch?
That's my question, what keeps them from doing it?
And do you know when the switch was installed? I mean, when that?
That was a Travis, Travis came to the council. It was a lot of us discussing the council.
Yes, it looked like it was at some point in 2021 when they added that, added that direct line into our sewer system. They do have flow meters on that that we're supposedly monitoring during this discharge event at 38 gallons a minute. If indeed they didn't add any additional flow to us, then we're based off of 38 gallons a minute, which is 57,400 gallons a day for the weekend. The problem wasn't noticed or any visible upset conditions over the weekend duties of the guys. So we're assuming that either the 4:00 AM flow increase caused us upset or it was just a continuation of four consistent days of 57,000 gallons in our system that we couldn't treat.
Right.
So that's why it's important for you guys to understand my decision that to only allow them to discharge during hours of operation. We're not a 24-hour facility. We don't have guys out there all night that can monitor our treatment process during their discharge events. So we need to pay extra close attention because we already know the effects of what that weekend did. So we're, we're going to have to play this real close. And if indeed it was indeed 38 gallons a minute, then that's kind of where I come up with one-third of that during those hours. We're going to go start that potentially at 10 gallons a minute for eight hours, which is 480 minutes, which is 48,000 gallons. If we see a trend in our testing that looks as an improvement, then we will allow them to turn it up a little bit during hours of operation to help them get to the point where they're self-sufficient. For some reason, when OX Industry purchased that off WestRock, the agreed order that IDEM had WestRock on is non-transferable to sell. So some of the past events that they had that were not good were kind of erased in the new ownership. It's hard to put an agreed order with this owner and transfer it to this guy that may have plans to remediate this guy's issues. So they don't transfer. So we kind of started back at gravit zero with this. So the first thing according to our response plan is to protect our facility at all costs, which inclusion emergency, desist, which I personally gave the plant manager. And he was informed this evening, right before we came down to the meeting, that we would continue this disruption of service to them until we are under compliance. In order to stay in compliance with our MPDS permit, we need to start our first stages of the enforcement response plan, which is basically us sending them a letter and say, hey, you're going to the National Pretreatment Program. You're in violation from sending us discharge that created a pass-through and interference of our treatment process. So that would be the first, first thing that we would do. If this continues, then we carry down the steps. There's, ultimately, we can disrupt their service and forever. But the paper mill probably requires or has to have some form of discharge, at least in situations like this. That's why this plan was brought together for the National Pretreatment. They can't get their treatment process to work well enough with their own waste that they can get it clean enough to send to the river. So they don't have any other choice but to run it through their treatment process the best they can and then send it to us. They were under the impression two years ago that they would never need to discharge to us because there has been some rulings laid out to OX that they're available freeboard, which the state says 12 inches. So from the top of ground to the water, they need 12-inch freeboard. They have violated that continuously in the past, but they sent message to their certified operator and to the state that they would never need to discharge. So there was no reason that they need to carry that one foot freeboard until they overran it into the river. So we're trying to work with them. We know that they employ a lot of citizens. We know when they discharge, it is a nice income for the town to maybe purchase some things that they wouldn't be able to afford without that discharge. So I get it, but ultimately, we got to protect our asset and our treatment plant and we got to follow this MPDS permit. So I just wanted you guys to understand where we're at with this. I talked to everybody they had. They tried to convince me different, you know, we can't. And our hands are tied. So until we get into our compliance, they're not going to be able to discharge. They told me they might have to shut the plant down for a couple of days and they might have to hire somebody to haul any of that. And I get it, but it's not necessarily our problem. They've been, they knew the potential hazard of running their lagoons high and we just don't have a treatment process that we could take a lot of that flow. So I had talked with Roger last night. I think once we get past this in a little bit of free time, we don't necessarily have to have Commonwealth draw us up a plan for concentration limits. We can do that on our own if we choose to. What we need to do is make sure that we protect the treatment plant from anything ever like this happening. There's not another case, we only have one other major significant user potentially is Meridian Foods. Their waste is food-grade waste, which our folks are fine with that, okay? Paper waste, not so much. So you can't really compare one to the other. But they both have VOD, they both have ammonia, they both have phosphorus limits that we can find out that, we just need to make sure what they send us along with what we already have, doesn't put us in violation before we decide to take any flow.
So the switch. Back to the switch. They're answering, I mean, can they, what's the saying?
They can't walk so they can't turn it on. We have to do one of those.
There is locks that are put in, but my suggestion to the town council would be to utilize our own locks, make it a two-lock system to where they can unlock their lock or unlock our lock to release flow and we can't unlock their lock to release flow. And I think that would be the most economical way that we can have some kind of authority to say, no more midnight valve stuff, okay? So that's kind of where we're at right now. Only time will tell as far as the treatment process, how long it's going to take us to get back in compliance and those before we'll allow discharge. Now, when I say back in compliance, if our national limit for our MPDS permit is 30 milligrams per liter, if we wait until we get to 29, it's not going to take much to get us back in violation. We'll try as soon as possible, as easily as possible, to get them to be able to discharge back into us because we get it. The problem of it is we just can't go back in violation doing it.
So you don't have a timeframe on when that would happen?
We don't know how long it's going to take the plant to fix itself.
We have a 60% removal of solids. And the, but not all of our flow goes into the plant and then out of the plant. There are several areas that go into the plant, it goes to another section of the plant, it gets recycled back to this part of the plant. And the only thing that is wasted off is what we can get to settle. And because their solids are so concentrated and it's the microfibers of paper are most interfering with the solids to come together to flock to a heavy piece of solid to outweigh the atomic weight of water and sink to the bottom. We've got floatable solids, suspended solids and settleable solids. The only thing we could waste are settleable solids. They're not settling, they're staying in suspension. And that's the problem that we're having with this pass-through. That means it comes into our treatment, it runs through all sections of our treatment processes and still stays in suspension to the point that it's carrying out to the river.
Right, and should be settled down for the removal.
I've made several suggestions and ideas that they could try to run their pond water into geotextile bags like we use. Use some alum and potentially polymer to help flockuate those paper products to make them flock together and settle. And then maybe do some discharge to us. They're not entertaining really any ideas because they're mad at me right now, but it's all in protection of the plant. I told you guys when I first started that we don't operate half-assed. We're going to do it the right way. This is the right way, regardless of any pressures or concerns or phone calls saying that we're not letting them discharge when they really need to. And there's nothing we can do about it.
Well, I think it's just a big lesson for all parties to learn, but they've got to be more proactive. They got to understand what they're doing. They gotta understand what they're doing or what they're dealing with. So we don't, they don't put themselves in the position where they have to do what they do.
And that was discussed too. There was a discussion that I had with the guy that said, hey, you know, we hit drought conditions all summer. And those were good. You guys can attest for it, they're huge. So to let that overflow is a huge mistake on their part. They knew they were getting close. We were in drought conditions all summer. They could have sent us five gallons a minute for continuous days.
Absolutely.
And never ran into this. But they are stern believers that they would never have to discharge to us. There was an accidental, supposedly accidental discharge in February of two thousand twenty-four. They said they didn't discharge to us. Their meter read different. David got the number. It was different than the month before. That threw up a red flag. He turned it into bridge that there was a bill established. And they were all kinds of bent out of shape over that. So they put locks on there and they changed some stuff. And we're never discharged into the city again. And now they really need to discharge to us, unfortunately.
And now we need to put our lock on.
Yes.
And what's the process of doing the two-lock system?
Well, we just have to go down there and then put our lock on there. So if they unlock their lock, they're not able to load them about.
Can we do that?
Yes, we can.
So a question. Do we need to work on changing that to match what you're saying? As far as the eight to four, Monday through Friday only? I know that's not in there.
There is a, a section in the enforcement response plan that once the voice of our superintendent deems it okay to restart discharging, I can lay out a plan for them.
For the specific situation?
For this, yes. The specifics, we don't know yet. So as we resume discharge from OX Industries into our plant and we do continuously monitoring during those events, we should be able to get some analytical results that'll let us know how much we can send per day. And so the number that we're gonna start with is gonna be very conservative to protect us. And then if we see that the testing is indicating a trend that shows that we are getting improvement, even though they're discharging a small amount, we can increase the amount until we see a plateau. And once we see a plateau, then we can justify, if we got hit with a rain, a dry event, and the sewers don't have much flow, and we get a big rain, it always clears the sewer lines, which gives us a slug, natural slug. Once we determine that they're on a plateau, that we can take a natural slug from the sewer system on a big rain event because we're still a CSO community, we could still handle that flow. Then we'll kind of have a baseline of how many gallons based on their discharge that we can take from them if there's ever another event like it. See, the problem of it is this was only put into effect in two thousand twenty-one. There was a discharge of fifteen days. And February of two thousand twenty-two was their first event. And then there was a accidental discharge that they said that occurred in February two thousand twenty-four. It's not like we do this every day that we're, we should have some kind of baseline of flow established. Even though the permit writers of I D M looked at a Sewer Use Ordinance ninety-three-five, which much indicated that we could take at least fifty-seven thousand gallons of a day because it's in our national pretreatment. The problem of it is, is the fifty-seven thousand only takes into place if that's less than five percent of our daily flow. Part of the problem is we only had eighty thousand gallons total flow for that period that they started discharge. So if they're contributing fifty-seven thousand gallons of the eighty thousand, they are over seventy-five percent of our flow. So we can't. There's gonna be some numbers that say you can discharge this amount if we carry this flow. It's gonna take a little time. It's gonna take some study and some continuous testing and analysis to determine what that is. Probably two thousand twenty-one, you know, with Travis. It sounds good that we can have them discharge and get a sixty thousand dollar sewer bill from him. That sounds great, but at what cost? And that was never determined prior to the connection being made. So.
Well, we appreciate you being all over it. Appreciate the way the whole process worked. Appreciate David doing this job diligently over the weekend to make sure we got all the numbers that we needed, help us with these flags. It just worked out and thank goodness we caught up with you.
Yeah. So I'm gonna keep in contact with OX Industries. When we get back in compliance, we'll slowly allow them to start flowing and we'll see what happens. I told them that we can't guarantee that they can continuously discharge because we may run into a situation like this again. So it's all gonna be about concentrations of what the plant, their concentrations are so high. It's unbelievable the amount of concentration they have out of a system and partly because of their lack of planning and preparation for their own treatment system.
Well, it never gets diluted because they're just reuse it, reuse it, reuse it.
Yeah, and adding chemicals. So the concentration of solids. So they had some historical data that wasn't tied enough with the data that we collected from their actual samples. They, they were saying they estimated approximately a hundred and fifty milligrams per liter suspended solids. It was two seventy-five. But as they continue to recycle that water and send it back and pull it in and add, they keep adding concentration. And without wasting capabilities to waste out of that system to clean their water.
Set that up.
It just continues to grow. So as the years go by, it's gonna be more stringent. Their concentrations are gonna continue to grow. And it could look like something that we may not be able to. So we're just, I mean, the only thing I can say is we're doing everything we can do and we'll try to get them as soon as possible.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much, Matt. Okay, let's move on to the street department. Eric and Jacob.
I just wrote down two questions.
Oh, we got one. I got a bid tonight from MeBulbs. There's ten lights for the inside of the building, two lights out front that shine in the parking lot, big lights for the back, and then one for under the, over the wing two bar. Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, twenty-six.
Sixty.
Are these just the bulbs?
Um, yeah. Bulbs in the motion line, or not motion, the dusted on three of the bottom. The inside lights have a ten-year warranty and the outside lights have a seven-year warranty. The same guy that just put them up here at the parking lot.
How many total?
And he also said if we paid the same that we paid with the credit card, we'd be a five percent.
If we use our credit card?
Yeah.
Like we paid last year? So we can give a five percent discount?
Yeah.
We could take it down to, it's probably a hundred and fifty. Thirty-eight, twenty-six? Thirty-eight, twenty-six, sixty times five. Thirty-six, thirty-five, twenty-seven.
I'll make the motion to approve using the credit card for the thirty-six, thirty-five, twenty-seven for the lights.
Teresa Wells makes the motion to approve the lights for the. All right?
No. And our art fund.
Yes, and that's the money we're using for the, um, the art funds for repairs of that building. So I have.
I'll second.
Daniel Lincoln should make the second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd say, I'd say that needs to go through the roof. Thank you, guys. Okay. The town office, Derek's the chief of office. That's the one minute. forms the one that's struggling. All right, Bridget, what do you got?
You should have a. An email from the county. They've about, another one with the mess up on their. First payment for the water box. Which aggravates me because I called them when they, when they did it and they told me that was correct. So it wasn't correct. So now it's wrong and we're short.
And I can vouch because Bridget couldn't understand why it was. She said to me actually about why it was wrong amount. They, she said she called them, verified that it's correct. But now we found out it was wrong and correct.
So we owe the three thousand eight hundred and five dollars and seventeen cents. So I need permission to pay that.
I'll make the motion to pay the three thousand eight hundred and five dollars and seventeen cents.
Daniel makes a motion to approve the shortage.
Second.
Teresa Wells, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to vote? All, all in favor of approve, Bridget?
You should have a email in there from Mark Brown about my box.
Your tour, your box?
Yeah, mine is your box. The duct tape repair, they can say it was like six hundred some dollars. So I need permission to have Robert sign the attachment so we can cancel the one and get the new one going.
So the old one was cost us one thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and cents. And now they can get it done for six hundred and thirty-five dollars. But I need approval to cancel the old one and get the new one reissued at the nine hundred dollar duct tape rate.
I'll make the motion to cancel the one and do the six hundred and five.
Daniel Lincoln should make the motion to cancel the old or current one and get the new one reissued.
Second.
Dustin, second. It's all in favor?
Aye.
I do, with the story being out, I have invoices that need signed before I can pay them. So I guess I need permission to allow Duffy or Bertie One to sign all of those invoices.
To make sure that they're valid invoices?
I'll make the motion to have Duffy sign it.
Dustin Reese makes the motion to have Duffy review and make it valid and be signed to tell him that they are.
I'll second.
Megan, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it, okay. And well, moving on to unfinished business. USDA Water Utility Project one nine zero three three dash Commonwealth. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see that. Sorry. How about the sort of standing activities? Any standing activities for the legislature to make a report? No, you don't even have any.
No.
No?
I like your shirt.
Any others? Nope. Okay, moving along. Too unfinished business. USDA Water Utility Project, one nine zero three three Commonwealth. We spoke to Commonwealth earlier. They didn't have anything to present today, so they're not gonna be here. So we will keep that on the agenda for the next meeting.
We just told everybody, problem?
We haven't done anything. I did have the meeting with Commonwealth and Brackley in regards to long streak of damage that was done. In that meeting, what Mr. Brackley had come up with, because they did, you know, have the before videos that I think most of you have seen, the after videos, and the road wasn't really bad prepared to begin with. But it was clearly evidence that they have caused damage to it. So we also asked them, because we have funds remaining to do paving, to get us some estimates on at the last week for certain roads. And what he agreed to do was, if you look at our contract when we originally started this, we had a paving contract using two thousand twenty-two, the year of two thousand twenty-two, uh, cost figures. Well, now we're gonna be into twenty twenty-six here for paving starts again. And what they have agreed to do, and once they get everything done and they give us all of our figures for the roads and all that stuff, what they've agreed to do is keep our cost at the twenty twenty-two cost per foot and tonnage and all that stuff and not increase it to the existing cost for, for material and labor. So until we get numbers back, and then we really don't know what that does for us. But I would guess four years of keeping the cost at the twenty twenty-two figures versus twenty twenty-six figure is gonna be a substantial amount with all the paving that we got to do. Not just on that, all the paving that's left that we're gonna do, they've agreed to keep it in the twenty twenty-two figures. So we'll probably know when we'll have the next meeting. They haven't gotten numbers back on the, on those estimates yet. Okay, moving along to ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten dash fifteen, I'm sure somebody will talk about the manager. Okay, so, Seth, you kind of had control. Do you want to give everybody kind of an update on the changes of this ordinance?
So really, the only changes that were made was the section seven, the costs. The fine was kept at a hundred and fifty dollars. And we changed this surface area from, to the six thousand square feet. Has gone to the hundred and fifty. And then anything additional was gonna be the three cents for each square foot after the six thousand.
So I'm reading it from, you guys have heard of. I'm looking at that section B where it says, uh, green property in the total impermeable surface area is less than six thousand square feet. It's the hundred and fifty dollar charge. And then the other one is, what they're saying here is three cents for each square foot of surface area between six thousand. That, that, that makes a difference. Should that say over six thousand? That'll need to be corrected.
I'll just write it on there.
So that would be over six thousand. That's the only thing I had looked at and noticed. So this is an ordinance repealing the town's existing weed control ordinance and establishing a debris and weed control ordinance. Whereas the town of Indiana, the town has previously adopted ordinance, ordinance number two zero zero eight dash oh six, or oh, no, dash oh six, dash oh one as amended by the ordinance number two oh one three dash seven dash three and ordinance number two oh one five dash seven dash two, the existing ordinances. ordinances regulating and requiring removal of weed and ranked vegetation growing upon real property located within the town. Whereas the town council, as the legislative body of the town, the council has determined that it is in the best interest of the town and for the health and safety of the public to repeal the town's existing ordinances regulating and requiring the removal of weeds and ranked vegetation growing upon real property located within the town and adopt new rules and regulations pursuant to the provisions of Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash one oh dash one or DOT one dash one regarding the removal of weeds and ranked vegetation growing upon the real property located within the town. Now therefore be ordained by the town council from the town meeting in Indiana that section one, repeal the existing ordinances, ordinance number two zero zero eight dash oh six dash oh one, ordinance number two zero one three dash seven dash three, and ordinance number two oh one five dash seven dash two are each repealed in their entirety, it shall no longer be of any force or effect within the town following the effective date of this ordinance. And uh with all that being said, I'll take the motion to approve that this is a second reading and adopts ordinance two oh two five dash one oh dash one five.
I'll make the motion to adopt the ordinance number two zero two five dash one zero dash one five.
Daniel Wicks, a motion to adopt. Tracy Webb, seconds. All in favor? Aye. You want to vote? Approved. Okay, number three, our unfinished business list is partial alley vacate, six oh three East Lincoln, five oh seven East Lincoln, and five oh three East Plaza.
I made motion on time there.
Dest makes a motion to vacate the alley in regards to the terms of the order that we've already discussed at length. Megan Decker, seconds. So we'll go take a vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye. All in favor of your motion? Approved. We'll move on to new business. We send it Jenny, seven ninety-nine, East South Street watering adjustment.
On around September the nineteenth, I have my lawn over seeded, and so that required me to water every day for like two and a half weeks, so I requested adjustment on my watering bill.
We were outside the window of the normal watering credit for us to do the adjustment without approval, so she just needs approval for us to do an adjustment outside of that window.
Destin Reed makes a motion to make the adjustment. Tracy Webb, second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Vote? Approved.
Okay, and then um since this meeting was after the due date, I went ahead and paid the amount that Derek estimated, so I was hoping to have the late fees wait.
So she paid the amount that she would have paid, can you allow me to do the adjustment? But since the meeting was late, the penalties have already occurred on the amount that I have now adjusted, she wants permission for me to be able to adjust those off as well.
I'll make the motion to adjust the late fees. Second.
Daniel Lincoln makes a motion to adjust the late fees. Destin Reed, second, all in favor? Aye. Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for taking care of your own. Okay, moving along, cat issue at the trade park.
There's a lot of them.
We've trapped them. We've trapped at least
Who put this on your video?
I don't know.
You did though. I assume we we all know there's a cat issue at the trade park. It's called the, I'm calling it the hangouts.
Yeah.
Site, uh we got trapped, we have caught several dozen dozen of them, and we are in
Well, some of them went pretty home, some of them went to bed.
And we're having ones that are not fixed, we're having them fixed and
Yeah.
Yeah, so being
Are they friendly?
Yeah.
They're just laying down there.
I mean, they'll run from you with the
I counted twenty-three traps.
So I put it on there because it probably needed some notice to be on our trailer.
He's aware of it.
I know he's aware, but officially he needs to be aware.
So
Because they called them when I got
Andrew actually went down and sided the first time that his
Feeding.
Yes.
I wasn't able to cite her, I didn't think, because he asked her about it.
They don't have a problem.
Yeah. Yeah, I was He went down and spoke to her about it, and she denied beating him to keep him there, but
I was under the impression she was siding, so
Yeah.
I thought she didn't think of it. I mean, she doesn't have a problem, probably doesn't have a problem.
Well, she
But she is creating the nuisance.
She is definitely feeding him, because I've driven by myself, and all
Kind of obviously, they're on the porch.
Right. And there's about eleven bullies.
So I mean, she can probably serve with the nuisance, but as far as the cats, it's going to be in the trailer park. Because they don't have a problem.
Is this maintaining common sense or is this common sense?
But here here's the thing, though, based upon our ordinance, she's the one that's doing, she's basically doing the feral cat, which is what the ordinance said, which she's not registered, which is when I was under the impression that she got cited for, and that did not hurt.
I don't have that in my favor right now.
I mean, I understand she's not there with the trailer park, but since she is the one who
And she's the one that is the feral cat that that we, yeah, the feral cat colony. And the ordinance that we've created says that those have to be registered, and she's clearly the one
My original plan.
Yes, and that's what I was told, she had been cited for and fined for and has not paid it yet. So I'm going to ask you to find out how, find out if that actually occurred or if there's record of that, and if not, then that's probably his act as well.
You sent me that down around the scope of this.
She's been on her website.
She's working on getting everything on there eventually.
I will try to figure that out with my permissions within my rank of me, are extremely unlimited of what I can see of it, so I'll try to figure it out.
I'll get hold of them as well. Yeah, there's quite a few.
So it's a lot better than it was. It was
The summer was unbelievable. And I know you've done some work on there.
And a lot of them died off too.
Yeah, they did. Some of them look rough.
And they get they get disease.
Well, if you get them twelve every month, and you're fighting over for five of them, hopefully we're reducing the the amount.
Is that your hope we're going to?
Okay, so you guys know what you're going to do, take care of that. Thank you. Okay, moving along to penny issue.
They're not making them anymore.
Yes, that's the problem.
The the penny issue, they're not making them anymore.
They're not making pennies anymore, so there's a national shortage, um and financial institutions were dealing with it, and boats are like running out of pennies. So what we're probably going to run into is customers coming in to pay with cash, if they don't have exact change, eventually we're not going to be able to give them change back. So we have to figure out what we're going to do, since they have to balance each day. Um my thought was businesses and banks are rounding, but we won't be able to do that. So my thought was, if we didn't have exact change, if we could just credit their account, then we would be talking about pennies.
Can we do that?
Yes, you can, um and just not not exacerbate the issue, you're also going to probably run into building permits coming out to pennies if, I mean, I guess they would have a bill, so we would have to apply that penny to the bill to if it became an issue. I don't know, uh but it's just two different transaction types, so I don't know how you want to handle that.
Yes.
Can we round up and round down, so there isn't nothing that's pities?
Then we have a whole new set of rules and make that happen.
Well, we're eventually going to have
We'll have to, we'll have to come up with some something. Because I think at any time, the building permits, I understand that, but
I think my money do, interesting, and uh sales tax is seven percent, so regardless of what they do, it's another minute.
Right, I mean, are you going to round up or down?
I don't I don't I don't know exactly.
I don't know that you even made a decision tonight either on all of it, because right now we have pennies and we're okay, but at some point we may not, so
Well, that would give us some things we can start looking into and see how our best team will as well, um other businesses and other other government agencies. But for now, I think to that point, I like the credit of the account.
Which we do for people all the time, so it's not big deal.
I got anything to put in the one dollar.
So you're the reason we don't have pennies?
Well, I I was gonna get rid of all of a sudden, I'm thinking pennies I got, too many, like, oh, you don't want to hold them.
That's what everybody's saying.
Are they, so everybody told them to come to the house, I'm really going to be a
Right?
Thank you. Okay, uh moving along to BSN right of way from this twenty-five dash eleven dash two.
Did it change the name of the company?
I I didn't see that. So the right-of-way street kept for mail uh was originally on uh I don't have the name from one cover, but now it's the LUCOM. Is it? Oh, the old one, thank you. So it was going to be uh uh the person who was going to be doing the work. She got a relationship with, I'm sorry. Uh it was going to be uh for TONO or Comcast Communications, and now it's going to be LUCOM for Comcast Communications, so they must have switched their contractor, who's going to be doing the work for that for a minute. They already started, didn't they?
I said they're not passing all the water.
I was just looking to see when they were to was scheduled to be in ten months' time, but because I I assume because they haven't been through our approved process, Bridget, make sure that they're not make sure they're not. It's on. Okay, we're back live, we apologize for losing. So on the Charter Communications LLC RW permits twenty twenty-five dash eleven dash three and twenty twenty-five eleven dash twenty-one, Daniel Winkett makes a motion to approve all within the town limits. We'll have to get official approval for any work that's not within our town limits. And Dustin Reese, second.
Wednesday is when they send me all of these.
Wednesday?
Yeah. So they have a nice calendar that lists.
Yeah, I did the second half.
So, Tracy Wells, second.
I thirded it.
And, uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. Okay, twenty twenty-six Eaton Volunteer Fire Department contract.
They've signed theirs, I think it's twenty-two thousand.
So we have the contract for the Eaton Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two thousand dollars for the year of twenty twenty-six. Make a motion to approve those fire contracts. Dustin Reese makes a motion to approve the fire contract. Daniel Winkett, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Indiana. Okay, uh, Eaton Excellence Award.
So this kind of came from, I think it was a while back, really. Um, she talked about recognizing some community members a while back, and so in that spirit, I kind of took it a little bit further and thought maybe we could do an Excellence Award that we could nominate a couple of people each year. Uh, maybe not this committee, but maybe a different committee could do that, um, and just.
Excellent Award Committee?
Yeah, yeah, that one, the one, yeah, the one I referenced. Um, but they could, um, I've got some criteria in there for it, so that it's not just somebody that something wants, but it's somebody that's actively contributing to the community. Um, it doesn't have to be anybody in a leadership position, it could be, you know, just a grandma that, you know, picks up trash consistently or whatever, I don't care what it is, but somebody that's making a difference in the community and they get noticed and, um, you know, recognized for that, that's what I'm looking for. So what I was thinking, and you guys should have a sample of, I did the invitation, so you can kind of see what that looks like, um, but to have a little award ceremony probably in the spring, um, with my schedule, probably if I'm in charge of it, it's probably gonna have to be early April, I think I can make that work. Um, and just do like a ceremony, they can invite their family, um, their employees.
They picked out April four.
Subject change, I'm gonna check. And then we could do like just a dessert bar, just keep it pretty simple, but I've already got decorations that I used for another party, so.
I remember us talking about this.
Yeah, so the only thing that I would ask more from the town would be to maybe, um, put up like a placard, and then each year we have.
Put a new name on it.
Yeah, put a new name, just like you see at hospitals and things like that, and then, um, give them their own award, which there's a copy of a picture of what, what I would like to see on the.
I, I like the idea of this. I love it.
If you want to read through, let me answer any questions.
I read through, I like it.
Since you're overseeing that, I'll make a motion that you get the Eaton Excellence Committee started.
All second. Daniel Winkett makes the motion, and Dustin Reese, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve. Thanks, Megan.
Yeah.
Daniel, our dozen. Okay, moving along to two dozen, our twenty twenty-six salary orders. This will be our first reading of the salary ordinance. And I will read it here in a second, but just to give you guys some, some notations, or I'll read a brief piece of it, but just to give you an overview of the things that we really did change, we gave all employees this year twelve hundred dollar raise, except for Mr. Kirby, since he was just hired in, and his annual raise will be six hundred dollars. We elected to have a council and no raise. Uh, other change on the document we made is, uh, when any of our employees go to meetings or outside events, we got our daily meal reimbursement up to thirty dollars, that's for all three, all the meals for the whole day. You can't really go anywhere to get that done, so we increased it to fifty dollars a day, up to fifty dollars a day. So the town of Eaton, twenty twenty-six salary ordinance, an ordinance fixing the salary compensation of certain officers and employees and the town councils of the town of Eaton, Indiana, and fixing the time for taking effect, they're, uh, being ordained by the town council of the town of Eaton, Indiana. So this will be our, consider our first reading, and we both look to pass the Senate of our committee. Any questions?
Final question is, with the town marshal and us hiring and doing, are we leaving that pay the same, or are we going to reduce it a little bit?
I think we need to leave it the same.
Leave it the same, I mean, in my opinion, we already approved that from the town marshal's pay.
Didn't you just say last week that Delville's marshal was making seventy-six? How are you gonna?
I think he's making eighty, to be honest with you.
How are you gonna keep people, we lower?
And, and I get that, but I also was also thinking of the other two that we currently have, trying to help increase their pay as well.
We did, twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah, we gave everybody a couple of dollars.
Okay. That was fine.
Okay, verifying utility bill adjustments that were made for the month. We made adjustments for water, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and cents, sewage, four thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-six cents, sanitation, two dollars and forty cents, stormwater, a hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty cents. That was all the utility adjustments for the entire month.
Make the motion to approve.
Daniel Winkett makes a motion to approve. Tracy Wells, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All approve. I need a motion to approve the flame ducts.
I'll make a motion to assign the flame ducts.
Daniel Winkett makes a motion to assign the flame ducts.
Is that it?
Tracy Wells, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns from the audience? This is your turn. Timeless, okay, great. And I will take a.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Daniel makes a motion, he makes a motion to adjourn. Tracy Wells, second, that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.